And that's in the building code, I don't, does the county enforce your building code, or the state construction code? Or is it in Rio construction code that force your building, where do you guys, who implements your building codes here?
County.
County does, okay, yeah, I mean.
Well, we'll go through Dave first to get the approval.
The zoning, they need that before you go to the, to the county for the building, right? So, um, I mean, an RV may or may not meet their standards for, minimum standards for a long term. And you can, you know, that can be incorporated into the, the, as well. To address concerns associated with, you being a long term. For residential uses.
Yeah, so there's a whole other issue of when we get to it for, um, changing our ordinance to allow for the smaller dwellings. Now, I think our minimum right now is seven fifty, we were talking about five hundred four fifty wish. Then there's other provisions, there's, there's camper trailers that are bigger than four hundred fifty feet, and so would that qualify?
Well.
So. Large rabbit hole to cut down. Even here at the beginning stages of changing and making this lake residential.
Dave, you have much, um, activity, I guess, when it comes to concerns or complaints when it comes to this?
Well, they've had, uh, one not too long ago in Windville where they have for their water and sewer, they bring water in, fill their tanks up on the, and then for their disposal supposedly according to the person that owns the property. I've seen the tank there where it has wheels on it.
Yeah.
Take it, dump it, and then bring it back, so they're complying on that part. I like what you were saying, Douglas, they have it where, uh, you just can't, I didn't think they had it where you can even camp on it. With, uh, uh, dwelling there, I don't believe they have that part, you said something about that, I don't remember reading that in their book, but. They, they made it where you just can't camp on the lake residential because it does depreciate the value of the property, and it was getting at one point where a lot of people were doing it, you know, so.
So this particular situation with Ron Tricia, you actually gave them a, you ticketed them then?
I didn't issue a ticket, which takes them to court because they have so many days to.
What I'm talking about.
Yeah, so many days, I, I think you guys give them thirty days to comply, if they comply, then it's done, they don't comply. I, if I can get enough information on them, then I'll write a ticket and file it with the courts and, and have it go in front of the. And just straight.
Okay. So. I guess to start, to start back to the top here, um, we, we started this ordinance, we have a purpose, is, is everybody all set with that portion of it? We've been working on this for a few meetings now, so. Uh, permitted uses. You got a copy in front of you.
No, I don't, I don't see it in here, just some more than I have. I, I have to go.
Do you have a copy?
He stole it, sorry.
Oh, I printed my own.
My apologies, I didn't grab it.
Um, the only thing I see in nineteen oh two, sentence three, is a bit of a runt sentence, accessory buildings and structures and uses. Say accessory buildings, kind of structures and uses.
Special uses nineteen oh three?
Not here. Is we. No.
If we add the wording in now at a number nine, we can, would that be addressed in the Lakeview or the lakeside residential zoning? Or would that go into the general provisions and definitions in our standing ordinance?
Our standing, yeah.
So we could add number nine, temporary camping as permitted, and then have temporary camping defined in the main part of our ordinance? Or would we put all that subsection there?
You could do it either way, you could, you could do it here, so you, you're saying you would add it as a special land use under nineteen forty three. So you could do it there, you probably would have a definition within the definitions section, and then I assume you guys, I haven't looked at your full zoning ordinance in a while, but I assume you have a section that specifically lists out conditions for special land uses. So we would add a section to that article that spells out what is required of, um, that use. And any other uses we would be adding.
I was gonna say, I think when we go down, if we put that sentence in now, and then we add those other sections, we're gonna be adding a definition for temporary camping. We're gonna be adding a definition in for, um, improved lot. Or unimproved, however you want it, to find it one way or the other, where, where the line is, is when it's considered a vacant lot to an improved lot. And then. I'm sure there's more, I'm sure I missed it.
I mean, temporary use, um, I mean, if they, they take a vacant lot and obviously build that, or if they, um, demolish and build?
Well, 'cause I know a lot of times, especially with insurance nowadays, if your house were to burn down, it's cheaper and a lot more convenient for anybody to get, buy a trailer live in that while you do the cleanup, the rebuilding, as it is, to like go to a hotel around here, I mean.
Yeah, when, when Ron brought this to my attention, I took a drive out to this past weekend to drive down and see where it was. Um, I think I counted five trailers, uh, be, around houses in a matter of less than probably three quarters of a mile. So, there, there's, there's, there are trailers out there, uh, around houses, behind houses, um, but to Ron's point, then this is the only vacant lot.
Yeah, there's plenty of campers down, I mean, I, I have my bus sitting in my driveway, right?
But there's a house that, that I think is the next township, um, that, um, is, are building a house where they have an RV sitting there, you see if they've been.
Exactly, I think we already have some, some verbiage in our ordinance to get those for that.
Yep.
But again, it would have to go, if you wanna use it for temporary camping, you have to come and get a permit from us, and there'd be paperwork filled out, your, and purpose, and the timeline possibly on it. I mean, obviously, if you're building a house, that's a very fluid number.
Yeah, I agree, and then obviously, you know, the water, the wind's water, but, you know, what, what about that too, so. Yeah. So, and you can see some of them out there have been sitting there for a while based on the grass and that has grown up around them, um, you know, I'm sure they're using them, I guess, at that point, there was nobody around them, or I drove around there, but, you know, but you're taking the season at this point.
Exactly, I don't think the concern was homeowners parking their camper at their property.
To make it a lot.
Yeah, I mean, and if they will want to never use their camper and let it sit there and fall apart, that's kind of, not much we're gonna do at this level for it.
And the noise of the generator, I guess, to have a.
Well, that, that's a huge one. We just got done, we just got done with the ten, ten day trip, and that's a big one when you're boondocking or parking, you're running a generator, that's not, that's just common courtesy.
So Leslie, we could do it that way instead of adding a section just when it comes to camping too, correct? Okay. So if we add another nine there, then, then that would work, the other ones to that temporary section? Nineteen oh four?
Mm-hmm.
Leslie, when we talked about this, we talked about accessory buildings, we talked about location of those, uh, we looked at some of our neighbor townships when it comes to that.
Yep.
Um, and then, you know, talking about the view as you look out towards the lake and not be able to see that.
Right.
Um. I guess, um.
Yeah.
They probably, most of them probably push them towards the, the back side or the rear.
Yep. Yep.
Um, so they're not viewable.
Correct, yeah.
But if you're an existing landowner, lot, lakefront lot, and you had that shed there.
It would be a pretty, you need a non-performing use.
Yep, until something, they did something to that, so.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, that doesn't look like a new shed. But what is the setback now currently from the board?
Well, we don't.
We don't technically have one.
We don't technically, yeah, um, and that's where. We've talked a little bit about that, now ask me, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um. I don't think we're gonna really come up with a. Specific number. Correct?
Great.
Yeah. Your people, your, your belief or your recommendation would be, any feedback there?
You guys give me?
Uh, we could, but no, I'll ask.
I mean, we're looking at one.
I was vague, I was.
Twenty-five foot from the base, and I mean, I know what my average lake lots are length from front to back is only a hundred and twenty feet, so twenty-five feet still leaves you seventy feet to build a house, that's, I mean, not, not extreme by any means in my calculations, I know some of the houses on Townland are much further away from the shoreline than my houses, and I consider that we have a hill drain that kind of dictates where you built your house.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's many lots left on Townland that are not developed, I don't believe, I don't know, you know, Dave?
Yeah, I don't think there's that many myself, so.
I'm trying to remember what ours setback, when we built the house next door, and I think it was seventy-five feet, I don't know, that wasn't a Cato thing, I think that was just from the building department and health department. Was what they recommended for, for the development of the water, water edge.
Okay.
Yeah, ours has, uh, thirty.
Are you want mine?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we're gonna want your opinion on a lot of these.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I apologize, this is the first time I've seen this ordinance, so I'm definitely gonna wanna look at it with a more thorough eye, um.
You wanna come back with some information?
Yeah, I'd have you to do that, um, and I might, like I said, there's some, um, some, um, formatting changes as well to codify, 'cause I assume this was, you said this was pulled from Douglas.
No, we kind of.
Oh, you guys pulled it together, okay, I didn't know, but we're seeing it pulled from somebody else, okay.
This is, this is, this is our scratch.
I have, I'll have some ideas for you, no, this is great, I mean.
To start.
And I, and we're still okay with having, uh, a, a larger lakeside front yard and then a smaller roadside, that's.
Right. Sure, which is pretty normal, yep. Yep, that's the whole point of first thing, really you want the house towards the front, so you get a lot of back backyard, um, to use.
And we wanna include, uh, um, you know, obviously the hot topic, uh, uh, tonight as far as the camping.
Yep.
And for you.
Yep, yeah, and you know what, I know we're talking about adding it as a subparagraph nine to the special land use list.
Give it its own heading, can't you?
Um, pardon?
Give it its own heading?
I would, well, I, I'm not sure I give it its own heading, but I would not necessarily list it as a special land use, because typically when we think of special land uses, we think long term. Um, they run with land, so I would probably put them under permitted uses as subparagraph five, but refer, but have a, another subsection that provides standards and permitting. So that the permit would be from the zoning administrator, not from the planning commission, like they don't need to do public hearing and all that kind of stuff, because it's a temporary use. So I don't, in my opinion, that's not the type of use that I would require to go through the special, the whole special land use process, which is a little bit more, more onerous. Um, personally, that's kind of how, how I typically see these type of temporary uses, um, is it's a separate permitting process administratively through the zoning administrator, uh, or zoning administrator. Uh, but we can, I mean, we can structure that in many different ways within this ordinance.
Imagine we could have a form filled, ready to go, a fillable form that would hit all the points that we would want him to vet, and then, obviously, if it goes above and beyond that, he denies it, they apply for the special, we look at their reasoning.
Yes, yep. Yep. It would be, you, they would be able to appeal for decision, um, if it's denied for some reason, but I mean, we can incorporate whatever conditions we want, it's just, um, the process is a little bit different, I'm just not sure that's, you guys wanna get in the business of ruining every single one of these, um, at, at this, at this spot.
So we got it as number nine, or number five or nine?
Yep, and then it would be like temporary camping subject to section blah blah blah, and then we would put a section probably in your general or portion of your ordinance that specifically talks about this.
'Cause I imagine if we write something specific to Lakefront, especially for camping, that camping section will be applicable to residential, rural residential as well.
You could do, yeah, you could add it as a permitted use to other districts as well with the same or similar rules, uh.
'Cause I have had, well, they're a belvedere, but I've heard complaints of not anything to do with Lakefront, but just camping in general on open lots or fields.
So Dave, to, currently today, when you get a concern with that, you're, you're, you do, wha- what's your action, what does that?
Look, if the tenant or their, their book or whatever.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about Cato Township, so if somebody gets a complaint to Cato Township.
Cato, okay, I'll look into it, I get their number, of course, I can get back to them, and, uh, if there is a violation there, um.
But you.
I assume they notice, but what's bad?
What do you go off from though, as far as if it's a violation?
Well, see, that's what's bad now, if it says they can stay there fourteen days, I can't say it's been fourteen days, the neighbor might be able to, but maybe they can't either. And then if it did go to court, the neighbor would have to be willing to.
So it matters where that, so where that camper is, if you're looking for a, as your guide like, correct?
I believe that's what our books are here.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
So this, adding this would clear that up as well, for future complaints?
To eliminate it, yeah.
Well, just saying, it's real easy, somebody says that they've been camping there for however long, you go and look, well, they never got a permit, they're.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would make a big difference. But only bad thing is it's fourteen days out of the year, it's not fourteen straight days, it could be.
That's our, that's our current, if we add this, if they can do fourteen days, they can do any temporary camping with a permit through you.
Every time they do it.
Tech, is that what we would be opening up?
So they do it one day out of fourteen weeks.
Yeah, but we would have standards for that, you could say, I mean, you could put in there something to the effect of, you know, each property was only able to obtain one of these type of permits per year, or a certain number of permits per year, I mean, you can structure it in any way you want.
I guess what would be. How, how do we word it, that it's temporary, and the fourteen day thing won't really apply anymore, but still allow people that have property to let their friends come and camp on their property for a weekend? I mean, that shouldn't be a violation of anything.
Well, it would be.
I wouldn't think twice about somebody coming over and being like, hey, go ahead and stay on the bus.
You would probably say you wanna do it over a certain number of days. If you're, or you're trying to use it, the, 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 the point is you're using it as a, as a, a temporary dwelling, like this is where you live, this is where I am living currently, not I, like a, you know, I don't wanna go to, I don't wanna use the term Airbnb, but like that sort of thing, you know, we're talking about, I am staying here for a temporary period of time because I don't have a home, like that.
'Cause I'm sure we have, like, deer campers that do that, correct?
Right, that's why I mean, there's, there's gotta be a line of how we, how we define it for Lakefront, and then in the general provisions, and where that general provision gives Dave a little bit more clarity on how to, 'cause right now he's working off the fourteen day thing, which again, he can't prove, if you got a neighbor that's even willing to go, then they have to go to court, it's, it's a whole, how do we make it worded that, look, you can camp on your, you can have people over, camp on your property a couple of days, if it's more than that, it shouldn't be that big of a hassle for Dave to, 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 for one, the burden of proof shouldn't be on him to say, hey, you've been there more than fourteen days. That means you gotta go there every day and go for fourteen days, which or somebody, now, now you're the weirdo looking in the window. Like, that doesn't, there's gotta be a way to do this, that it's a little more black and white and maybe a little bit easier to do.
Yeah, if a neighbor, I mean, and as you know, code enforcement is a complaint-driven business, so if someone cares enough, then they better be willing to provide the proof that the violation exists, is it, is it, is provided in his own ordinance, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
They should document it too for court, 'cause they wanna know a lot of detail, like what they were, a lot of times people are lying on their own, but, you know, they update more, you know.
Okay, so that being said, then we're gonna let Leslie work on some things for us, and then she'll bring those back to us, um, maybe at our next meeting.
Are you thinking like public hearing for this in October, or are we, or are we slower on this one, Ken, just wanna make sure, yep?
No. Yeah, what I'd like to do though is possibly talk about that subject matter.
Add the public hearing for, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then.
November, you guys have a regular November meeting, but we're, you're worrying about special media October, I assume.
Yes.
Yep, I will, I'll work on that for, for next week.
Is that enough time period for that, or no?
Yep.
Okay.
It's the parade.
That is awesome.
It's the nine eleven parade in town.
What is it?
Nine eleven parade.
Oh. Picking up, okay, sometimes it does, yeah.
Uh, new business? I don't, well, what'd you guys do last time this happened, 'cause you had, you had a meeting last year and this day, correct?
Yeah, just, I mean, we didn't stop.
Okay. Look out the door, you can see him out there a while ago. Um, new business, um, the first one, we want to invent our, uh, uh, solar, regulate our solar energy systems, and you'll have a copy of, of the solar amendment.
Somebody give kind of a.
Yeah, you can, you can.
Yeah, so I was at the board's last meeting, they asked me to attend to.
We all were there too.
Oh, you guys all were there, oh, okay, perfect, I didn't, I knew some of you weren't, okay, perfect, so as you guys know, we gotta make some changes in the zoning ordinance to make it compatible with PA two thirty-three. Um, so solar and wind are pretty straightforward, really not much we can change there, because what is, what they're doing is just adding the, um, PA two thirty-three standards for um, the second phase toys, there's boilerplate items that, uh, we as a township really don't have the ability to, um, vary from what is set forth by statute. So as we discussed at the board meeting, what the solar ordinance and the wind ordinance does, um, is adds a section to your existing, uh, wind and solar sections of the zoning ordinance that says, um, once PA two thirty-three takes effect, if that's on November twenty-ninth, if it's after that, after November twenty-ninth, whenever, these standards apply. Um, only to the extent that they are different than this, your standard in your cor- current ordinance. So, when you work, when the statute takes effect, these setbacks, these noise, et cetera, all apply, um, but so do your current standards that aren't different than that. If PA two thirty-three doesn't take effect ever, or on November twenty-ninth, your current ordinance stands. So it's really just trigger, it's a trigger section that, um, uh, makes your ordinance compatible with the more stringent industry-friendly standards that the statute, um, implemented. So it's just adding a section to your existing solar and wind ordinances, um, we can talk about the substance of them, but, uh, there's not much we can vary 'cause most of that is copied and pasted from the statute. The only thing, we, we do have the ability to discuss, and I brought it to the, to the attention on the last page of both the solar and the wind ordinances, is if we wanna discuss where we currently allow wind and solar, um, and if we want to revise those areas. So currently, solar is allowed in the industrial and commercial districts, and wind is allowed in ag, industrial and commercial. And that's fine, at least that's what it says, I just want to make sure that we, um, reconsider that discussion if we want to revise that in any way in light of the new law. As we discussed at the board meeting, my recommendation is that we have a minimum of three hundred acres available, uh, just to satisfy, say, we've, you know, we're not being too restrictive and saying we can't, you know, do it anywhere, I think that's a comfortable number, three hundred, five hundred acres is kind of the range that we're looking at to, uh, avoid risks with being, the ordinance being challenged.
Is that just for battery, or is that for all?
That's for all three, all three, I would recommend we have the same, we have the same locations for all three. You have, you set this.
Do you really think we could do that with wind, with how they build that system?
I don't even know if you'd have five hundred acres of participants that sign up.
And that's not your problem, that's not, if you, if you, if they can't get that many participating property owners, that's not the township's responsibility.
Does the PA requirement have a minimum lot size?
No.
So one acre lots could have one built on it?
Uh, well, you're, we're, I, my recommend, my opinion would be that your ordinance minimum lot size would trigger, because PA two thirty-three doesn't discuss that issue, so my opinion is it's fair game for you to regulate, but I don't want us to go too far and say you gotta have a, what, you know, hundred acre property and then, you know.
I was gonna suggest if we said minimum of ten acres, and then you wanted to add a bigger parcel, we'll just automatically subdivide your parcel right now to ten acres, and they can't do it. But. I'm actually going to abstain from these votes myself, so. I'd recuse, but there's not, ju- for the wind and solar.
Do you have a conflict, or?
I, well, so with an abstainment, I have to add a reason, possibly, if you guys want the reason, with a conflict, with a.
'Cause you voted on the original ones.
With, with recusing myself, that means there's a conflict of business, there's no conflict of interest, there's a conflict of moral and personal beliefs. I became a commissioner to protect the safety, welfare, and health of Cato Township, I can't vote yes on this in good conscience, and I can't vote no on it in good conscience. So, that's the, abstain from the vote.
Is that, just because you voted on the original ordinance does not mean you're.
I voted on ours, we're police, sir, but. Absolutely, I, I fully believe in our ordinance that we just wrote, what they did at the state level basically negated the last year and a half of our commission's work.
Yeah, it took every, everything we did.
And everything, we, we even entertained the opposite side of the, of, of the landowners that wanted to do it, we came up with the compromise. We spent all that time, spent all those resources, paid Leslie to help us.
I understand though, that this, by us doing this, this helps protect.
I, and that's where I'm, I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place here, I vote yes, I open up the township residence to problems, because if PA goes into effect, the state can say that we can build as big as a window as we want, and that's one of the things that we stood hard on, if I vote no, that goes into effect and they come and do it anyway. So, I can't, as your commissioner, vote either way on this vote, so I'm going to abstain from the vote. I can give more reasons if needed, but, I mean, I'd be here all night.
Well, we're just scheduling a public hearing by anyway, so I hope not anyway, but, um.
So if we go back to solar a little bit, section three, and, and there it says amendment of, and it doesn't say any.
Yeah, so that, so if you see, you see the, did you guys have the, oh, okay, so my version that I sent, sent you, I should have had, um, my comment in it, uh, okay.
'Cause it's my credit for the. Oh, oh, just.
So I had a redlined version, what I said was, um, planning commission should discuss if it wants to make changes to where, it's exactly what we talked about, um, deciding do we wanna make changes to which districts.
Okay.
Um, are, it's permitted, that's just a placeholder, we can negate it, we can leave them where they are, if that's what you guys wanna do, that's fine, I just wanted to bring it up as a discussion point, um, I'm not sure how many acres are current.
Well, right now, we have it in our commercial industrial, correct?
For solar, it's commercial industrial, yeah.
Um.
Wind, it's commercial industrial, and I think ag as well.
Yep, so the amount of acres that we have in commercial industrial for solar is what?
Acres or something.
No, not much.
About forty acres.
Forty?
Yeah, about.
Okay.
'Cause we go all the way down to Fritz Road, all the way to Youngman Road, correct?
When you add ag, it substantially bumps it, mostly township's ag.
I'm just, I'm just looking at, uh, uh.
Ag is like eighty percent of the rest of the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You see that?
Yep, yep, I can get it. I would recommend that you add that to be safe, I, I just don't want us to get into a situation where we say four, forty acres is not a lot of space, and.
But don't we think as a, as a commission though, that we believe that maybe possibility that we'll grow the commercial industry down towards the ninety-one corridor?
And that's. And that's, and that's always a, a possibility too, and I, I think that was something that you guys were willing to discuss once you got into your master plan, because typically.
We did.
Yeah, and I don't know if you did, did you just revise your future land use map, okay, wonderful, yeah.
We did. Yep. We talked about that as a group, didn't we?
'Cause if there's opportunity for growth there, then somebody could rezone currently zoned ag land to industrial or commercial, and I've dealt, done on other communities where it's not necessarily currently. And I've dealt, done on in other communities where it's not necessarily currently zoned for that use, but the potential's there, and the benefit to the township is that that requires an additional step, they have to get a rezoning, and it's a bit more of an onerous process, but it's possible. So, I just wanna make, like I said, I didn't, I don't want us to put ourselves in a position where it's so small that a developer's gonna say it is by default discretionary, and.
So you guys thought about that as well?
We're ahead of that, we have more, I mean, we want a minimum of three hundred.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
I think we, we should, I mean, she's gonna be, she won't back us on that, I mean.
Right.
It was not protected by the township.
Pretty sad state of affairs.
I'll defend you guys in any way, and whatever you decide, that's my job, I just wanna make sure we're talking through it.
There's only one person in the world that can force compliance me to do anything, and she's at home right now.
You may have to do.
I, I should do something to help. I, I seriously thought about resigning over this.
A lot of time and effort into.
I just cannot, I don't handle the state telling me what we have to do as a township when, I mean, if we exist for a reason, this is the reason.
So Dave, what do you think?
I, I get we don't have much choice here, and that's, I, I'm not making one.
Which is weird.
Yeah, I mean, I think it has to be the forty-six ninety-one corridor, doesn't it?
Not necessarily.
What else you gonna add to it, you're, you're gonna go on to the, the end culture then, or comes to solar?
I don't know. The only thought I had, you could add it, where we know FAA's gonna regulate it, but that's not our fault, our problem. You know what I mean?
No.
Well, there's a regulation around the airport.
Yeah, that's more strict with the, um, with the, with the towers, with wind, just because of the height.
But I mean, we're talking solar, but we're trying to find the same areas for.
It would be, it would.
Yeah, wind is, wind you've got it, and in all three of these districts currently, I believe.
So we're all set for winds, correct?
I, I think so, I mean, you guys have.
She's wanting.
There's more wind and battery.
Yeah, wi- so, solar and battery, I, like I said, I just don't know how much space you currently have for solar, and that's why I wanted to at least address it, if you wanna leave it, you can leave it, um, I just wanna make sure we're not, um, trust me, I get, I, I get it. I get it, I helped you through the original ordinance, I know, I know where you're coming from, we're just trying to get you guys to a place that is give the absolute most control we possibly can, pushing some limits, admittedly.
And also in, in, in this amended amendment for the P A, um, if by chance this repealed, and doesn't take into effect, no matter what year it is, then it goes back to our reg.